One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next up, we have the consent agenda. Is there anything anybody would like to add or remove at this time?
Second.
All right, it's moved to second, approve the consent agenda. Michelle, would you please read?
Approval of the council minutes of January 17th, 2017. Approval of payment of city invoices processed through February 15th, 2017. Acknowledgement of receipt and filing of the financial reports for January 2017. Parks and Recreation Board minutes for January 17th and January 25th, 2017. Plan and Architectural Review Commission minutes of December 12th, should be 2016, and January 2017. And expedited approval of R1 Resolution urging elected officials to direct the Wisconsin Department of Transportation to complete the U.S. Highway 12 Environmental Impact Study. And item number C2, approval of the 2017 agreement with Downtown Whitewater, Inc.
All right, so moved in second. Is there any further discussion? All right, we'll call Michelle.
Wellness, Langness.
Aye.
Grady.
Aye.
Binny.
Aye.
Gadel.
Aye.
Singer.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Motion passed, and we'll move on to our next item, agenda item, which is hearing of citizen comments. Cameron informed us that the projector is broken tonight, so the city manager update, which was will be done next time. So next up, we have hearing of citizen comments. No formal council action will be taken during this meeting, although issues raised may become part of a future agenda. Participants are allowed a three-minute speaking period. And although specific items listed on the agenda may not be discussed at this time, we definitely allow for public input when those items come up for debate. So if there's anything not on the agenda anybody wanted to speak about, please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our next item, which is O1, adopting a change of the district zoning map for the following parcels to enact an ordinance to impose the R3A University Residential Overlay District Zone and Classification. And it would be 1041 to 1043 West Sterren Road, 1031 West Sterren Road, 1025 West Sterren Road, 240 North Prince Street, and vacant land, which is tax parcel WP 00181A. And this is all for DLK. And also portions of properties, 281 North Tratt Street, 275 North Tratt Street, 263 North Tratt Street, 257 North Tratt Street, and 251 North Tratt Street. That's all for DLK Enterprises.
Yep, just brief background on Wally will provide the majority, the plan. The Architectural Review Commission took action to recommend approval at their February 13th meeting. Wally, any additional details?
Basically, what it is, is this was an R3 district. And as you all know, there was a new zoning district created in our zoning rewrite called R3A University Residential Overlay District, which gives greater, opportunity for greater density in areas near the university. And that's what was taken advantage of here and requested here. It takes down several houses in the Sterren Road, Tratt Street area in order to make room for a 64-unit property, fairly high density, but within the limits of R3A. And the Plan Commission unanimously recommended that the council grant the rezone. And they also granted the conditional use that was necessary for this project as well, subject to the council approving the rezone.
Any questions for Cameron? Or any action on this item?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in seconded. Further discussion? Anybody in the public? All right, so motion is to approve. We'll call Michelle.
Langness.
Aye.
Grady.
Aye.
Binny.
Aye.
Gadel.
I'm staying.
Singer.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Wellness.
Aye.
All right, motion passes, and we'll move on to considerations. First up is C1, agreement with GAAPA for keyless entry system for municipal building. Cameron?
Yes, this is a proposed purchase from GAAPA Security Solutions. GAAPA Security Solutions operates out of, they have offices in the Milwaukee area. They provide currently service when we need service on our existing keyless entry system, which is obsolete at this point, or nearly obsolete, very difficult to find repair parts for it. We did a request for quotes last year and worked on reviewing those quotes and seeking approval from the lowest bid quote last year. Following awarding of the bid, we found there were some concerns and issues with the contract. And later acted, the council acted to terminate the agreement in November. So since that time, or during that time, we were also open discussion with our existing maintenance service provider. And we're informed and apprised of the Vigilon Keyless Entry System. Following discussions and the termination of the contract in November, we actually met with representatives from GAAPA Security Solutions and Vigilon Keyless Entry System, the company Vigilon, or the company that provides Vigilon Keyless Entry System, in December. And this is coming to you now, a proposal to purchase a system which would run independent of any individual providers locally if there was a desire at some point for the City of Whitewater to back out of working with GAAPA Security Solutions. The Vigilon system is current and is provided outside of that arrangement. So we would be able to maintain it or provide another service provider to maintain it in the future, if needed. The budget for the year was $45,000, and the proposed solution is $44,291. Staff would recommend approval.
Cameron, what part of the current key fob entry system is obsolete?
The system, I'm told, the software is functional, but the parts within the actual locks and the key fob sensors, all of that, whenever anything breaks down, it's difficult to find a replacement piece.
And it's how old?
I honestly don't recall at this point how old it is. The chief of police is telling me 1997 is when it was purchased, so.
Thanks, Chief. All right, are there any questions for Cameron, or any action on this item?
Move approval.
Oh, is there a second? Hold on, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Pat.
There's been a completion date. I'm guessing that they would have it completed within the next month to two months. I don't have an exact completion date for you, but I want it as quickly as possible.
Were there any other proposals?
No, this is, this one issue with this is that we've run through the quote process already. And so we brought this forward without requesting any additional proposals.
So motion is to approve. Is there any other discussion? Any public comment? All right, we'll call Michelle.
Grady.
Aye.
Binny.
Aye.
Gadel.
Aye.
Singer.
Aye.
Allen.
No.
Wellness.
Aye.
Langness.
Next.
All right, motion passed, and move on to C2A, which is discussion requests for direction regarding speed bumps or other traffic calming measures on North Street between Newcombe Street and Jefferson Street. So we'll lead off with Chuck, Cameron, and then if there is anybody in the public, obviously, we noticed this to all affected property owners. If there's anybody in the public wishing to speak, we'll open it up and then turn it back to council for a final action.
Just by way of history, this was brought for discussion at our last meeting, and we wanted to bring it forward after, again, after we had provided notice to residents. Letters were sent to residents in the area where we've had the discussion, or the focal area of Cherry Street and North Street, and were invited to attend this evening. So with that introduction, Chris McDonald has been excused from the meeting tonight with another commitment. And so Chuck Nass and I are here to answer questions. I don't know, Chuck, if you have anything additional you want to share as we get started.
You all have my memo on this situation that I presented to the council last time. But during the course of the last couple of weeks, I have gone up there and again looked at everything and over the situation. We do have a school zone in this area that is not properly marked as well. There was some concern, if you remember, at the last meeting, of what we would do during the winter times with this whole situation. That folds into that along with, during the other course of what's going on, along with these speed bumps. And that the signs that are present now are incorrectly placed. They are not placed far enough away from the school itself. And there are old signs that say that it's a school zone when children are present. Problem being, they're at the bottom of a hill before you get to the top of the school. So they are hard to be enforced by our police department, and they are hard for the residents to know that children are present. So along with the speed bumps, I am recommending that those signs be changed. And we can talk to Wally if there's anything else that needs to be done. But according to the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control in Section 78, or 7B15, that talks about the school zones. We will add at the bottom of these plates that say "school zone," new signs. But instead of saying "when children are present," we will add the timeframes. The timeframes, I have worked out with the principal of the school, and we will set them at 7:00 a.m. until 8:30 a.m. And 2:15 p.m. till 3:45 p.m. This gives the children enough time to get to school, as some parents bring them in beginning at 7:30, and yet some are still there playing on the playground or something till 3:45, and sometimes a little later. Underneath that, another sign will be added that says "or when children are present," because I know children use the area during the course of the weekends and things like that to play ball because it is a school zone, a school lot. So those are my recommendations to go along with it. I think this will help. This sign will be moved back further between the Wakely Street and Cherry Street intersection. And like I said, we will work with Wally to make sure that we need anything brought to the council as far as enforcement. There can be signs put up. The other thing that I need to add at the end of these areas is that it's out of the speed zone now, out of the school zone, so they are legal and can be enforced.
That's a lot of stuff to put on a sign.
Their signs are made, that are made for this, that say the times. I guess I can pass this around if you'd like to see it. They are on here for the speed zone, and they are listed already, so it's not a whole lot of area that goes up.
Any questions for Chuck at this point from the council?
How many accidents happened at that corner that originally this was brought up at in the last two years? I mean, we're hearing about several.
I don't have any information. I know of some that have happened there. I don't know if the chief would have any for sure information, but I know that there are some.
I think that data was included the last time, so I didn't bring it. I thought we provided it the last time we met. Somebody had asked for that. I don't know if it was the date that the date was given, and we couldn't find an accident on that date. The numbers were lower, but again, if you mark it on one street, but it actually marked on a different street, we might not catch it. But I know Mrs. Boyd did run all of those streets to try and get an accurate number, and I think that that was forwarded. I thought you got it, Stephanie, didn't you?
Yeah, I think I had it.
That was four in the last two years?
I don't know what the number was. It wasn't, it wasn't the number that was stated at the last city council meeting. It was lower, but again, you know, it depends on exactly what streets she put in. She said she tried to put all of the streets in to see as comprehensively looking at it, and it was a traffic crash. So if it was reported something else, you know, it's hard to retrieve data exactly.
I mean, it could be when the guy ran into the fence. It's not a traffic crash. It was a property damage type of thing. It could be reported as, I would think.
No, that would definitely be reported as a crash.
Okay. I'm struggling with how many accidents need to happen there before a stop sign would be justified? That's what I'm struggling with.
I don't know if it's the accidents that need to be, or where a stop sign would go. Because what you have on that section of the street coming down is, first of all, coming up to Fonda Street from the east. There's already a stop sign at Fonda Street and North Street heading to the east. Coming from the east to the west, there's no stop sign at the very top of the hill, which is on top of a very hill. The next block is at the very bottom of the next hill, which is a tough place to put a stop sign, regardless of what it is. The next block is a block before the Jefferson Street intersection. So those were my recommendations when I went through everything on why a stop sign in this area would be hard to place correctly or in a good spot for everything.
It just seems that-
That's not saying that the council can't say, "This is what we want here."
Yeah.
It can certainly be done. The recommendation was for speed bumps to go through, and now along with these school zone signs to be correctly placed, so they can be enforced.
I guess the people that lived in that intersection are the ones that brought it up, and they're the ones that are asking for the stop sign because of the number of accidents and near accidents they've been seeing. And if the stop signs are a better solution, I mean, it's true that, like you said, there's a line in the uniform code, whatever it is that you were quoting, that says, "Stop signs should not be used for speed control." Yes, there is. But the paragraph before it states, "Stop signs should be used if engineering judgment indicates that one or more of the following conditions exist. The fourth condition is high speeds, restricted view, or crash records indicate the need for control." It seems to me that that's where we're at.
Like I said, that's fine. That's what you determined.
Yeah, I think we should follow the code, but I think stop signs could pose even more risk for traffic accidents in the winter.
Correct.
Okay. But just looking at the signs you passed out, it's a lot. What about when light is flashing?
Like what?
When, instead of when children are present, or all these different times, when the light is flashing, like we have on Milwaukee Street.
There is a light up at this location. It is flashing when the lifeguard, or when the crossing guard is out on-
At this location?
Yes, there was, there was one. I believe there's still light there. Did it get?
It's on Fonda North.
Fonda North?
Yeah, right. There is one at Fonda North.
Okay.
And I believe that should be activated during the school times.
Can I ask one more? Chief, you were going to step up patrols in the area.
We certainly have, yep, yep.
Anything to report on that?
I don't have the data. Cameron and I talked. We've putting up, deployed the speed board, so we can try and get accurate speeds in that intersection. I know our personnel have been up in that area, but again, we continue to have it on Sterren Road, Franklin Street. I mean, there's so many streets in that area. So we have asked Kathy to collect all the data from all the traffic stops, warnings, and citations for the March 7th meeting, because we just deployed the speed sign.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this point, before we open up to the public? All right, so if there's anybody in the public wishing to speak on this item, please come up to the podium and state your name and address. And keep your comments to about three minutes, so we can make sure everybody has a chance to speak.
My name is Daniel Comfort Senior. I live at 338 East North Street. And now that I don't work anymore, I'm home all the time. And usually, the worst time for speeders is between 2:30 and 4 o'clock, because they're all coming from the industrial park. And they don't slow down. And I mean, I seen a cop by my corner on North and Wakely the other day, and I asked him how things were going, and he said, "Well, we found, we seen four of them that were going 35 miles an hour." That's a 25 mile an hour zone. I go, I don't know if he gave them tickets, or if he just let them go. But something has got to be done. It's either that time or late at night. They come flying up the hill, and they come flying down the hill. And if you all remember, a couple of years ago, there was an accident at the top of the hill where the guy hit a telephone pole at the 10 feet up the hill, up the pole. And he was going 100 miles an hour. I mean, something's got to be done. Some little kid's going to walk across the street, and somebody's going to hit him. And, you know, I've been living there for the last 25 years, and it's got worse. Every year, it gets worse and worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wishing to speak?
My name's Bill Wagner. I live at 324 East North Street. I have a concern about your stop sign in the wintertime getting up that hill. We won't even get into front-wheel drive and traction control cars, but I tried to take my wife's car up the hill to go to work one day, and I only could get halfway up the hill without a stop sign at the bottom of the hill. So the placement of the speed bumps and placement of stop signs, although I'm not sure the stop sign would do a whole lot, because if you go down to Jefferson and North, they roll that one all the time. I take walks every day, and they blow that stop sign just like it's not there. So I'm not sure a stop sign's an answer. But the speed bump, I have a concern in the wintertime. What's going to happen to the people coming out of their drives, or trying to get into their drives, with all the traffic that's going through there? So that was one of my concerns.
Thank you. Does anybody else wishing to speak?
I'm Vicki Fliegel. I live at 520 East North. I'm on the other side of the hill. And in the wintertime especially, I see a lot of times people going to pick their kids up. If they're not going, I mean, you don't have to be speeding, but just at least trying to get up that hill, you can't make it in the wintertime. And I mean, the city's great about putting sand out and everything, so it isn't that. But if you put a speed bump there, they're just going to lose it, because at the top of the hill with a stop sign, they can't always stop at the top. They're sliding in, in that. So I'm concerned in the winter, and I've lived there since 1977, and I don't think they drive any faster on this street than they do any other street in town. So that's just my opinion.
Anybody else?
Tony Hanson, 137 North Cherry Street. I was the one that actually brought all this in. In regards to the accidents and the reports and all that, I know the numbers of the official are lower. However, I know of at least three where no report was ever filed, because the person ran into something and left and was never found. Because I did address that two years ago, and then one year ago when a car across the street got hit, when the telephone pole got hit, and then when somebody ended up in the other neighbor's yard. None of those actually, I don't, like, I know I never filed anything, but-
But if we, did officers respond?
No, I came down here.
Right, but did, especially the hit and run, that would be required, because it's a hit and run.
Yeah.
But if it was just property damage and there was no report, then you're right. There would be an incident report if the officers did not respond to the scene for an accident.
And then one of the primary concerns that I had voiced last time, and I know the neighbor on the other corner who is also a permanent resident, kitty corner from me, had, we've talked on a regular basis about the number of near incidents on that corner, which is, in my opinion, my bigger concern than even the property damage and things like that. I'm not sure why there's the number of people that just cross that intersection the way that they do, but like someone mentioned, rolling through stop signs at Jefferson and whatnot, I see that's usually the cause for incidents. Or people stopping when there's not a stop sign has also happened, but that one we'll never understand, so that's all.
Thank you. Does anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Roberto Rodriguez. I live at 532 East North Street. I have been living there since '83. And I believe that what we're talking about here tonight is essential, and it will help the city, the neighborhood, the kids, and all the public in general. I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public? All right, if I could just follow up with Chuck. There was a question about if the speed bumps were there in terms of people turning in and out of their driveways. Can you address that question?
Yes, I can address that. The speed bumps will be placed so they are not in anybody's direct driveway area, similar to what we did on the Franklin Street area when we installed those. Those are placed directly so they are not in interference with people backing in or backing out of their driveways or slowing traffic down to the point that they can't get out. So there are places that we can put them. I realize that there's houses all on and everything, but there are signs of intersections and things like that that we can install those at.
Would these speed bumps be year-round?
The speed bumps that we have now are not year-round. As I said in my report, in my memo that I wrote, that if this is proven to work, if this is something we can do, there are speed bumps that are designed today to be made permanently. And the way they are working on Franklin Street and doing there, there are speed bumps that can be put in, and we could incorporate that into the street maintenance for next year to be done, to add permanent speed bumps, if that is what the residents are requesting, and that they have seen that there is a decrease in the amount of speeding cars that go through. The ones that would be put in would be speed bumps that do take rescue vehicles, police vehicles, snowballs, things like that. But yet they still do similar to what we're doing with the ones that we're installing as temporary over the summer months. Now again, there was this concern from the gentleman about the winter months when the speed bumps weren't there. That's why I went out and looked again, and that is when the school zone is in session, and that's when the area is, that we would put that school zone sign up to be enforced by the police department. And if you heard him say, "The hours that he has are the exact hours that we have for the amount of time that the school is in."
The amount of concern, I guess, is that if they're temporary speed bumps, the majority of the time they would be in place would not be during the school year. The majority of the school year, they would not have speed bumps, so nothing would have changed.
They're usually not in place probably four months out of the year is when they're not in place. And at that time, we do have the school zone there that we would have enforced correctly.
So what would the speed bump season be? When do you usually deploy them, and when do you pull them out?
Well, we'd probably deploy them like around the first part of April to deploy them. And they probably would stay in until sometime in November, like we did on Franklin Street this year.
Are there any other comments by council?
I just had a question, kind of back to the discussion, and I think Chris kind of brought up the point. I guess I'm just curious, are you of the opinion that a stop sign in that location would likely increase the number of accidents? Or is it just right now, the way that you are interpreting the manual, it seems that speed bumps are a better starting place?
I think speed bumps are a better starting place to go with. I'm not saying that the stop signs would increase the accidents. I know that there would be a problem if you're coming down the hill and need to stop. We have that same situation right now on Tratt Street. Just for that very small hill that we have on Tratt Street going down the Sterren Road where we have a stop sign put in is always a problem. As you notice, we have two sandboxes there to try to help us to alleviate that. But the first call I get during the course of the wintertime is from an officer saying that they're having a problem with cars stopping at Tratt Street.
I lived on Tratt and Sterren.
So this hill is much larger than that, and that's why this could be a concern during that course of what's going on. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that a stop sign is going to cause more accidents, because I can't tell you that. But I can tell you that I think the speed bumps should be tried first, along with the signage correctly, of the school zone for enforcement.
So the recommendation is to install the two speed bumps as the temporary, the ones similar to what we would have on Franklin Street, and then upgrade the signage or correct the signage to be compliant for the school zone?
Correct.
Is there any other discussion on that, or any action to that effect? So moved in seconded. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? All right, we'll call Michelle.
Benny.
Aye.
Gaedel.
Aye.
Singer.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Wellness.
Aye.
Langness.
Aye.
Grady.
Aye.
All right, motion passed, and move on to council requests for future agenda items. Mr. Wellness?
I take that back. Could we put something on the schedule so that we get a report from the police and the city about what the plan is for spring splash? Two meetings before spring splash is going to happen, so we're talking sometime in March?
We actually plan on talking about it the next meeting, so we'll...
Okay. Miss Gaedel.
Could we possibly talk about doing a campus city council meeting again this spring like we usually do?
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Second.
All who've favored say aye.
Aye.